7:30, Clerk Spencer. All rise and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to call the roll.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
Bram.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Hark.
Here.
Hanquist, absent, Kennedy.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum. We are in session. With the agenda, Agenda Item 3. Receipt of written communication from the public. Is there anybody in the audience who has any written communication they'd like to turn in? If so, please raise your hand so you can be identified. Anybody? All right, Ms. Lonergan, please come on up and provide whatever you have to Clerk Spencer. Okay, anyone else for written communication? Seeing none, we'll move on to public forum on our agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. Once you've been recognized, we ask that you go over to the microphone over here on my right, your left, and when you get to the microphone, please identify yourself as we are recording. There more of a feedback here than there is? What's happening?
Mike, can you check the microphone level? Thank you.
Where was it? Okay, so, once you're called, please go to the microphone, state your name. Address is optional. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes out of respect for people, other people who may want to speak, and also out of respect for the work that we have to get done here this evening. We will keep time, and if you go over your three minutes, we will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. Clerk Spencer, at this time, is there anybody signed up for public forum?
Yes, Mayor, we'll start with Julia Nitty.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a resident of the Elmhurst 255 Apartments, and I have a concern with the guest parking in the parking garage area below. Currently, there's not a good solution if any residents have guests over, so myself and several other residents have been having reoccurring issues with parking. The current solution is to call the police department if a guest stays beyond the three-hour limit and fill out an overnight form, which is limited to five nights. So I'm asking the city to help with some solutions by possibly offering permits, a limited amount of permits for purchase, or some other optimized solution in addition to working with the building developers and the management office to offer a better solution for the residents that live there.
Thank you.
Eileen Oser.
Good evening. My name's Eileen Oser, and I'm a resident on Fremont Street. And I'm here just to say a few words about the process that we've been going through as residents with the development at Elmhurst Extended Care. In the beginning, the attorney for the nursing home painted the residents on Fremont as being alternately irrational, angry, but always anti-senior and anti-disabled. In April correspondence with the D.P.Z., Mr. Day actually singled out a handful of residents by name and address and labeled them as objectors. In a May 15 letter, Mr. Dave implied that Fremont residents had been responsible for vandalizing signs and property with anti-EEC and anti-disabled slogans. Again, in the commission meeting on November 7th, the attorney also repeated these accusations under oath. With absolutely no proof, EEC and their attorney have implied that residents of Fremont Street have committed these acts of vandalism. He also talked about that this was the process, and we as a neighborhood may not be familiar with it, but this is how things go. Should Elmhurst residents be concerned that they will be portrayed in a negative light and personally called out if they oppose a development in their neighborhood? I don't know if any of these statements that he's made rise to the level of defamation of character, but they certainly are a form of intimidation. And I think the city has to ask themselves, is this how they see the process is supposed to unfold for any developments in the city? Thank you.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys.
Claude Pagash, 566 West Gladys. On the agenda this evening, we've got another city auction. Happens on a regular basis in this town. Unfortunately, when you look at the treasurer's report, and I've asked about this before, never shows up. Got to be a reason. Maybe I'm not looking at the treasurer's report the way I should, but when the aldermen want to help out, I'll be interested in seeing how much we made last year. On this BMW. Interesting, isn't it? Last meeting, we bargained with them. How can you bargain with somebody that comes to City Hall and says, "I got a $6 million offer"? What does he wind up with? $6 million. You guys had to do a little gymnastics to get the $6 million together, but you got it together. The interesting about a thing is, though, I don't know how this guy had foresight, but he was tearing down a building next to him about two weeks before you guys voted. Interesting, isn't it? Yes, it is. Foresight. Well, maybe you ought to go back and look at some of the videos and how these fancy negotiations took place. What'd you negotiate with? If you asked and gave them less, wouldn't have to worry about it. On this budget issue, I don't spend a lot of time here, and I agree I don't, but I find that I can hear it a great deal better on TV. I really can. The one thing that this council fails to do is this. When all these different departments come up, nobody ever states what their budget was for last year and what their budget is desired for this year. Now, I can come to City Hall and read it, but all the aldermen have the copy. It isn't voted in yet. Wouldn't it be interesting to know some group comes up and says, "Well, we got $800,000 last year, but this year we want a million and a half"? That might get the few aldermen to start asking questions. Because when these individual departments come up, seems like the council has lockjaw. There are a few questions, not many. But to know that the budget's $143 million, just what are you doing with $143 million? So maybe what you ought to start doing is saying, "Okay, last year you got your $500,000. This year you're going to get $700,000. Alls you got to do is explain why you need another $200,000."
Mr. Pagash, you have your three minutes. I'd ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
Surely, Mayor. Last thing, to all the city personnel, to the council members, I wish you all a happy and safe Thanksgiving.
Barbara Lonergan.
One second, Ms. Lonergan. Just one second. Hey, Chief? We okay? Sorry for the interruption. Please proceed.
Barbara Lonergan, 261 West Fremont Avenue. On behalf of residents impacted by fly-quiet traffic, we encourage the city to take the following steps. Work with ONCC community members to the south and southwest as they also will be impacted by interim fly-quiet traffic. Those include the communities of Downers Grove, Addison, Northlake, Franklin Park, Melrose Park, Maywood, and Stone Park. We would encourage the city to recruit new members to the ONC, including Lombard, Oakbrook, Oakbrook Terrace, and Villapark. Please learn if there is still a diagonal coalition. The vote on interim fly-quiet might have splintered the diagonal communities by keeping all traffic to the south. If the northeast communities speak out, they may jeopardize themselves in future rotation negotiations. Please consider joining fair. Please get a seat on the ONCC Standing Committee. When requesting a noise monitor, please request one at the start of the interim rotation. Please secure noise abatement for residents and ensure that all ONCC meetings are recorded. If not, request them to be. There's relevant information that we are missing if no one is in attendance. Meeting minutes are vague, and the public comment needs to be part of the record. We hope the city of Elmhurst will speak to the flawed decision-making process prior to the December 8 vote. There are three areas which we would hope you would speak to. Fair and equitable, no documented detailed decision-making process, and the rushed vote. As far as fair and equitable, the ONCC chair's white paper asks the following question. Does the interim fly-quiet proposal represent an equitable balance of impacts when considered in a full 360-degree arc around the airport? And we suggest the answer to that question is no. There's no traffic landing from the east on the 28R runway. There's no traffic landing or departing from the northeast end of the 22L. With one runway pointed southeast, southwest towards Elmhurst, and three pointed at Bensonville, this could never be compared as apples to apples when talking about populations impacted, and rotations could never be balanced in a 50-50 split. Additionally, Elmhurst is hit with diagonal traffic off the 422 as well as traffic that banks west off of the diagonal and comes south over Elmhurst. There was no detailed documented decision-making process. In her white paper, the ONCC chair stated that an inappropriate fixation on detail is meant to discredit any ONCC decision. But there was no detail involved in this decision. No complaints, no surveys, no noise data, no flight path patterns played a part in this decision. Two-plus years of planning, implementation, analyzing data, encouraging surveys, but ignoring the Test 3 survey data when it didn't provide the results ONCC had anticipated, and none of it was used to make this decision. And the rushed vote. The opportunity to alter or improve Option A, even though ONCC chair stated early into the Test 3 rotation that the results were not what they had expected, and maybe every other week wasn't fair for the diagonals, and every third week might be a better option. There was no opportunity for public comment to be factored into the decision-making process as public comment was scheduled after the vote. And the interim fly-quiet does not account for construction schedules, specifically for the diagonal resurfacing projects. All communities should be able to see alternatives for those construction schedules now before the vote, so there are no surprises later. Once the 4L 22R is taken out of rotation, Elmhurst could get even more traffic than is scheduled in the interim fly-quiet. I would also ask that our city leaders take a look at the JDA document that was provided on behalf of SOC communities. Reading through it, you will notice that much of this information is skewed for their clients' needs. Please review this document thoroughly, as ad hoc members were suggesting that this data is relevant and should be used in future fly-quiet plans. And last, we ask that residents be included in future discussions. If you remember back in July, it was residents who suggested that it was imperative to take action on this issue. Residents who went door-to-door to educate our neighbors. Residents who suggested promoting the Test 3 survey in the Independent. Residents who shared ad hoc and executive committee meetings, meeting notes with the city when they were not in attendance at these meetings. Residents who questioned the ONCC decision-making process, who in conversation learned that Park Ridge and Glenview were requesting to join ad hoc, who offered in previous public affairs and city council meetings that certain runways were not being considered for the interim plan. The syndrome plan is just the beginning. We have another fight ahead of us once negotiations start on the future fly-quiet plan, one that could impact us for decades to come.
That's it, Mayor.
Okay, that's it for people. That's it for public forum for those who signed in. At this time, is there anybody in the audience who did not have an opportunity to sign into our signing sheet but still wishes to address the council? If so, please raise your hand so I can get a count. Anyone else who wishes to address the council? Seeing none, we'll go on to announcements. Agenda Item 5. Any announcements from the dais? Seeing no announcements, we'll go on to consent agenda. At this time, is there any item on the consent agenda any alderman wishes to have removed to vote no or provide additional comments? Alderman Bram, 6.14. 6.14. Any other items anybody wishes to have removed? Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item 6.14. Motion by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman York. Clerk Spencer.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino. Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hark.
Aye.
Hanquist, absent, Kennedy.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays, one absent.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved minus Item 6.14. Onto Item 6.14. It's an ordinance. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask you to read the ordinance.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution of the redevelopment agreement by and between Elmhurst Auto Works LTD and Illinois Corporation. I always forget what that stands for. Illinois. Oh, yeah. I always forget that. Sorry. Illinois Corporation Doing Business As, Elmhurst BMW, 500 West Lake Enterprises LLC, and Illinois Limited Liability Company, 532 West Lake Enterprises LLC, and Illinois Limited Liability Company, BKPKS Investments, and Illinois Liability Company, Elmhurst Auto Group LTD, and Illinois Corporation, and the city of Elmhurst, Illinois.
Okay, to put this before council, put this ordinance before council, and ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Toledo, second by Alderman Mulliner. Alderman Toledo?
I have nothing to say. Alderman Bram, I believe, pulled this.
Okay, Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I voted no two weeks ago in regards to the report, I'm pulling this just to, once again, voice my concerns of moving forward with such a large incentive. As I spoke two weeks ago, I'm not saying there should not be an incentive for this developer, this auto dealership, but $6 million in my view is too excessive. I also have concerns of, does this meet our own TIF increment financing assistance policy? I've stated this in previous requests where number one says TIF assistance will not be provided. There's no may-not. It is definitive, will not be provided to projects that have the financial feasibility. I'm not aware that this development does not have the financial feasibility. I'm not aware if a study was done to recognize that. The argument to give this incentive, and this large of an incentive, is that they were offered this incentive by another community, which I understand that this would be a significant loss if this dealership was to move. But I also think that the intent to move is a lot more limited, even though they might have equal or even a better incentive than what we would offer just due to the extracurricular that they would need to do to move to another location. Again, $6 million is a large, large incentive. The return on investment will take many years. I don't have the documents in front of me. I want to say 10 years. There's also concern that I voiced before in regards to not including Jaguar in regards to the clawback. I don't see that. Feedback here. I don't see that has changed within the ordinance. So even though we determined when the return on investment would take place, we included the sales tax, et cetera, of the Jaguar dealership, but we're not including them as part of the clawback. So the two points being, to me, too large of an incentive, and then I think that we're not including everything we should be included when it comes to a clawback in case something does happen.
Okay, any other comments? Clerk Spencer, please call the roll.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
No.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Hark.
Aye.
Hanquist, absent, Kennedy.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, one nay, one absent.
Twelve ayes, one nay. Motion carries. Agenda Item 6.14 is approved. Onto reports and recommendations. 7.1, Mayor Morley, that's me. Couple of quick things. Certainly a reminder to everyone that we'll be reconvening as committee of the whole after this meeting for our budget. Happy to announce, a couple of, maybe a month or so ago, I announced that the city of Elmhurst had procured $10 million in funding for our Metra project that we're working on. I'm happy to say that we've secured another $2.4 million in STP funding. That's something that ultimately federal funds, but it comes down and it filters down to DuPage. And the DuPage mayor's and manager's voted to give our project $2.4 million. So right now, the estimate of the project is about $17 million. So we're well on our way to funding a lot of this project. I know that staff is working diligently to turn over more rocks and find more money. Certainly encourage them, wish them well on that. But I do think it's significant, and I want to thank staff and everyone involved so far in securing $12.4 million in that project. It's something to be lauded. Over the weekend, happy to announce that IC Catholic Prep defeated the mighty Wildcat of Wilmington. And this coming week, is it Friday? I don't even know what that game is. I'm sure you can find it on the line.
Friday.
Friday. The Knights of IC Catholic Prep will take on the dreaded Tiger of Byron High School. So we're hoping, we wish them well. Did they beat Byron? Oh, they already beat the Wildcats and Byron Tigers. So the Pleasant Plains, well, that doesn't sound like a very tough school to beat. The Pleasant Plain pushovers will be up against, oh, boy. Is there press in the room? I'm sure they're a very nice group, but I wish them well in second place. IC Catholic will be facing them, when is that, Jim?
Friday.
Friday.
Rock in DeKalb.
We wish them, yes, in DeKalb?
Yes.
Yes, we wish them well. Last but not least, no, last, yes, last but not least, sorry. 34th Annual Dan Givens Turkey Trot is on Thanksgiving, as it always is, this week. Starts at 9:00 a.m. They are still taking registration online, but they also have day of registration. It's a fantastic event. They support families in DuPage, keep all donations local. It is anywhere between 7,000 and 9,000 people. It is a gigantic race, very impressive. I encourage you all to turn out, even if you're not going to run. At least turn out for what I'll call the show. It's such a big race that people are still crossing the starting line while people are actually crossing the finish line. That's how many people we have run, and it's a great way to showcase downtown Elmhurst. That's it for me. City Manager.
Thank you. Two items first. On behalf of staff, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Hope everyone travels safe and is able to enjoy that with your family. We're very grateful for all the support that the city council gives us day-to-day so that we can do what we need to do for the residents. Thank you. Second, I would like to introduce Dave Olberg, our new history museum director, if you would, Mayor.
I need a motion to allow Mr. Olberg to address the council. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Sabatino. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are approved. Looking forward to hearing. Yes, sir.
Yeah, Mr. Olberg's been with us a week-ish?
Four days.
Four days. Close, close to a week.
Half a week.
He's done a week's worth of work.
And we thought this would be a good opportunity to introduce himself to the council, and, you know, a number of foundation members are here as well to support him. Dave, please.
Thank you. Good evening. I got to tell you what an absolute thrill it is to be here with the team at the Elmhurst History Museum. I'm looking forward to doing some great things together. Had the chance already to meet with staff, and I got to say what a dedicated and very creative crew we have. A lot of ideas, a lot of excitement here. I want to say a big thank you to the foundation for making me feel welcome right away Tuesday night and getting me off to a great start. We're already working on plans for the next couple of exhibits coming up. There's already some fun stuff in the works. And I invite each and every one of you, please, to stop by the museum, take a look at what we've got going on, and please share your thoughts with me as well as we plan for the future.
Great to see you.
And Mr. Olberg will be going to committee in the next week, certainly, and in the coming weeks to talk about everything that he's planning.
Fantastic. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
City Manager, anything else?
That's it for me.
Okay, any other reports or recommendations? Alderman Dunn.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to give a brief update on some recent events with the ONCC. Think, as most of you heard, we're a little disappointed by the outcome of the Fly Quiet Ad hoc Committee meeting last Friday, the 17th, where a runway rotation interim fly-quiet, or IFQ, plan was voted on and passed 6 to 1, and it was the least favorable option for Elmhurst, much like the previous Test 3 that we experienced in the late summer, early fall. This one hits us, the plan is for that to hit us every other week. So that's a bit disappointing. As you remember, recently, as I mentioned at the previous council meeting, Elmhurst had submitted an initial suggestion on a rotation plan, seeking some input from the CDA. We didn't get much, but we did realize there were some technical deficiencies with that one and worked that, and we were able to submit a, Elmhurst submitted a rotation proposal to the Fly Quiet Ad hoc Committee. And at the meeting, there were three options presented, A, B, and C, and there was a motion made to add the Elmhurst option to the list, which sounds like a good idea, but I view that more as a token gesture because it wasn't really addressed or discussed. And the B and C options, which were more favorable to Elmhurst than the A option that hits us every other week, were not really even addressed. There was, however, a motion made to change the criteria for the runway rotation plans. One of the criteria is to not impact communities on consecutive weeks. Certainly, that sounds like a great idea. The way that was brought up, though, was a bit disturbing in the manner that there was a sense that the diagonals were really not sharing in enough of the actual aircraft operations. The plan is for every other week to utilize the diagonals. That would affect Elmhurst and some other communities. But there were some statistics that were thrown out, and we really haven't verified them. But they gave an estimate that 74% of the actual operations were expected during this runway rotation plan to impact the east-west parallel runways, and only 24% to impact the diagonals. So the plan is 50-50, but there was a suggestion that the actual usage would be much more slanted towards the parallels. slanted towards the parallels, but that calculation was really not revealed or explained in detail. It was put out there, and some on the committee felt that that wasn't enough, and they made a suggestion to eliminate the criteria to not impact communities on consecutive weeks, hinting at that the preference would be to put more on the diagonals to try to get that 24% number up. So in my opinion, that was a bit of bullying that was being thrown out there by some of these communities, that they potentially could make it even worse. So I found that to be a bit disturbing. And that particular motion was discussed but quickly voted down, and then the Option A was immediately thrown out there, to my surprise, without much deliberation, and voted on rather quickly and passed. So here we are with that scheduled to go to the ONCC on December 8th for a vote by the full commission, and should that pass, which is likely, there will be an environmental impacts study, which could take, as we understand it, six to 12 months before this could be implemented. So we wouldn't see this implemented for some time, but, and it's scheduled to go to 2020. So that's what happened this past week and what we have coming up. I think some of the suggestions in public comment are valid, and we've certainly been working with other diagonal communities and exercising all avenues in trying to get a good solution for the citizens of Elmhurst. Thanks.
Any other reports? Alderman Palmsky, then I'll go to Alderman Bram.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, the Public Affairs and Safety Committee received an update from Metropolitan Family Services, and because we didn't need to vote on anything, it was just informational. You won't see it on today's agenda, but I thought it'd be helpful for the council and for the public to give a brief summary of what was presented to us, just because it's helpful information to know. Metropolitan Family Services has an office here in City Hall, and there are two social workers that hold office hours there to serve primarily seniors and their caregivers. What some of the services they provide include assessments in-home or in the office, individual family and group counseling, treatment plan development, case management, family caregiver consultation, advocacy, consultation with other providers, psychiatric evaluations, medication management, and additionally referral connection and coordination with outside services, including those just for veterans. In the last year, Metropolitan Family Services has assisted 488 Elmhurst residents. If you or a family member may need some assistance, the phone number is 630-833-1353, and you may also stop in City Hall. Thanks.
Okay. Alderman Bram, you have a report.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to talk about the ad hoc Fly Quiet committee meeting that transpired Friday of last week. As Alderman Dunn, who was our ONCC rep, has already stated and gave a nice summary of what occurred, I want to add my perspective on what occurred as well. I will use stronger language when I'm speaking about what occurred this past Friday. I'm not only a little disappointed, as Alderman Dunn stated, I'm greatly disappointed on the process that occurred. I think to say it was unfair, and the process that ultimately went down this last Friday is greatly unfair, did not do justice to the research and the committee's work over the last couple of years. This has been going on and being studied for a long time, and how quickly they moved to a motion to approve the option that impacted the City of Elmhurst the most, which in a previous Fly Quiet meeting, there is, I would say, at least from my perspective, a consensus that Test 3 was unfair. I'm sure that some of the other east-west communities didn't agree, but there is a definitive, better than a 6 to 1 at least, consensus that Test 3, which is actually slightly better than what's proposed as the interim Fly Quiet, was an unfair and not an equitable solution. So to my surprise, that they not only moved forward with this option that is similar to, but worse than Test 3, to me, is a disservice to the Elmhurst residents, and like I've already stated, a disservice to the process at hand. A 6-1 vote with the Displanes, Village of Displanes, being the only one to actually place a vote to say that this is not fair, this is not equitable, to me, really destroys the process that I thought we were moving forward with, especially when many on that committee, as well as many in general on the ONCC committee, ONCC general committee, have vocalized on, they're not in it for their own interest. This is going to be a fair distribution. This is going to be an equitable decision. As resident Lonne Grin had already stated, and she summarized some valid points that I think we need to follow up on, but I will touch on a few of them. We've been, we, myself included, as well as some residents, have been asking for what is the criteria of this decision process? Ever since we've been attending these ad hoc meetings, we have never got an answer of what that decision process is. To find out, the City of Elmhurst made a lot of effort. Residents, elected, as well as city staff, to make sure that our residents knew what was going on at O'Hare, knew what was out there in regards to providing input, being the complaint hotline, the website, as well as the survey, did all that because that was supposed to be some of the data points that were used to make a decision on what option was going to be for the IFQ going forward, none of which, none of which were even considered. Not even a blink of an eye, not even a discussion over those data points. I was unable to attend the previous ad hoc committee meeting where a couple of those on the Fly Quiet, or at least one from my understanding, since it's hearsay, were actually challenging the data because Elmhurst numbers grew. They challenged the data because we communicated to the residents on what's the best way for them to stand up and fight against something that could be detrimental to their quality of life as well as their property values. We did our part, but I do not believe that the ad hoc Fly Quiet committee did their part because they disregarded all of that data. They disregarded the surveys, they disregarded the noise complaints, period. There is very minimal discussion in regards to the options out there, and they selected the one that was dead-set to impact the City of Elmhurst residents the most. With all that said, I do want to talk on what Alderman Dunn made mention of is the data, the data that they talked about, the options where they said that it would impact 74% on the east-west runways and 26% on the north-south. Well, we all know you can take data and you can manipulate how you want, and you can utilize it for your own argument. What they're not saying here is 74% is the east-west communities. That 26% in this IFQ, this interim Fly Quiet plan, only impacts, only impacts the City of Elmhurst. So 26% of the time, it is impacting the City of Elmhurst residents, the same residents time and time again. The 74% is impacting east communities, west communities, and not even the same. It goes from north to south on those east-west communities. So we can spew data all we want, but that's not a fair representation, and that's what they were hanging their hat on when they made that decision last Friday. They overemphasized 74/26, 74/26. That is not the way to make decisions. That's not the way to be fair and equitable. With that said, I encourage the City of Elmhurst, all those elected, and all those residents to come out and speak and rally your neighbors for the upcoming ONCC general meeting on December 8th. This is our last opportunity before this IFQ becomes the permanent interim Fly Quiet program, which will be impacting the City of Elmhurst at minimum 26% of the time. And those percentages are based off Test 1, 2, and 3, so who knows how valid they are? The one thing that they didn't state on there is those percentages, what those percentages really show is the diagonal runways are not the most efficient use. The reason why it's a lower percentage, no matter how often you put traffic on there, is because weather conditions dictate that the east-west runways should be what's utilized. That's what the mayor of Chicago has stated. The most efficient and safest way is to utilize the east-west. Why do you think they're building out all east-west runways and not all diagonal runways? It's because that's the most efficient and safest use. If the most efficient and safest was diagonal runways, they would have built more diagonal and not removed the ones that are already there. So I just want to really communicate my dissatisfaction with last Friday's meeting, and I'm also encouraging all residents to contact those elected, and also to come to the meeting, and not only come to the meeting, but speak at the meeting. And one last thing, since our new history museum director is here, maybe I'll plant a seed in regards to a future exhibit of maybe doing the history of O'Hare and find out exactly where it originated and where it is today. Thank you for letting me speak above my allotted time, but this is a very serious issue, one that will impact us for the near term as well as the future, and we also have to focus on what the permanent Fly Quiet is going to look like moving forward. Thank you.
Any other reports? Any other business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Deuter, second by Alderman Mulliner. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We're adjourned. Quick public service announcement, we're having some issues with this lamp right over my head here, and it's kind of smelling.